Good evening, everybody. This is the zoning board of appeals meeting. My name is Arthur Austin. I'll be chairing this meeting today. To the right of me, I got John De Priest, William Sessio, and Hector Velez. And to the left of me, I have Marilyn Vega Torres, Joe Mahoney, Joan Cromwell, and Hugo Perdomo. We're going to start with the last two cases on the agenda, and that is for eighty-three, eighty-five Library Street and eighty-one Library Street, Maria Texera.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Through to the members of the board for the record, Richard Lynn's, two forty-five Sumner Street, East Boston. On behalf of the petitioner, as this board is aware, relief was granted back in July eleventh, twenty twenty-three for the property at eighty-one, eighty-three, eighty-five Library Street. Just to refresh the board's memory briefly, it allowed for the subdivision of land and the construction of two separate two-unit dwellings. Ms. Texera is here. She has worked diligently on getting her permits finalized. She is approaching getting that concluded and expects to break ground as soon as financing can be finalized and a contractor can be selected. Because we are coming up on the one year, we have requested an extension. I believe the statute permits six months for the relief that was granted. We fully anticipate that we'll be able to secure a permit within that timeframe. Happy to answer any questions of the board.
So there's no changes to the plan? It's just an extension?
No changes. No changes.
Any questions from the board? Is there anybody here that wants to speak on this or in this case? Okay, just as a courtesy, it's a pleasure of the board to extending this variance for six months. Okay, Joe Mahoney, make a motion.
Oh.
Yeah, make a motion.
I make a motion that we extend it for six months.
You have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? All right.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
You too.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to take a couple of cases that are just going to be, the first case, twenty twenty-four dash ten, forty-nine Harvard Street, Benny Burr, AIA. They requested to move to the next meeting.
The planning board has not finished with them. They've asked a applicant to come back at the end of this month, so therefore, the board should move it to the August thirteenth meeting.
Is there a motion to move?
I make a motion.
Second?
I make a motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the second one is twenty-five Beacon Place, twenty twenty-four dash eleven Medina. I'm sorry if I don't know that last name, but they've also voted to move it to the September-August meeting.
September.
September meeting. Is there a motion to approve the?
I make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? All right, okay. Okay, the next case is twenty twenty-four dash twelve, four-ten Beecham Street, Thomas Reedy.
David Minlin representing-
Could you speak into the microphone?
David Minlin representing the petitioner. Just for clarity, I have with me today Phil Henry, who is the civil engineer who designed the project, and Dennis Darvo, who is the consultant who's coordinated the entire project and put it together. At the last two meetings, Robert Fidel, who is the manager of the property owner, four-ten Chelsea LLC, was here. He's out of the country visiting family tonight, but we can certainly make the presentation. If you remember, the proposal is to reconstruct, actually, or construct a new gas station at four-ten Beecham Street, which is a triangular lot in the industrial zone, kind of at the entrance to the produce market and that general area. The project will include four double pumps, so there's eight fueling positions, as well as two sets of diesel pumps with a high-speed pump in the middle for tractor trailers and trucks, so they can be fueled from both sides, speeds up the whole process. Now, when we were originally here, there was a question of what the building would look like. The original proposal was a convenience store and cafe with office space upstairs. That's been scaled back to simply a grab-and-go convenience store, no seating, no eating on the premises, which really alleviates any potential for parking issues because we are short parking spaces. And that's the project in a nutshell. We did present, we submitted a couple of upgraded, updated plans, along with a description. The board had asked what the hours of operation would be, so we clarified that in response to the board's questions. The hours, the gas station will be open twenty-four hours a day. The convenience store will be open from five AM to ten PM. At ten PM, it will close, but there'll be a window where an attendant can hand people So it will be attended, but the owner was very concerned about safety after ten o'clock at night. At the change of shifts, there may be two people on duty for a short time, but in general, it'll be one person. And if anyone has any questions, before we get to the four questions, I'd be happy to answer them, or either of my colleagues would.
John, does the planning department have any?
The planning department recommends approval with conditions.
Okay. Does the board have any questions, any clarifications?
I have a question on the operating hours. You had mentioned that after ten o'clock, you'd have like the window service.
Correct.
How long will that last? Like, how long is that window service available?
Till five AM.
Until like five AM?
And at five AM, the store will reopen.
Open again, okay.
The new elevation we submitted and the new plot plant, oh, there it is. So you can see that to the right is the window where customers can go and buy products at that point. But the pumps will remain operational twenty-four hours a day, which, given that they're almost in the produce market and the trucks are coming in at all hours of the night, should be very efficient for them. And part of the reason for doing this is, you know, there are not a lot of gas stations in Chelsea, one of them being the Marathon Station away right across the street from the high school. And hopefully, this will take a lot of traffic, especially truck traffic, away from that area. Not that we want to harm any other businesses, but, you know, there's a significant traffic issue there, and hopefully, there would be minimal traffic in this area.
What would be the name of the gas station?
The last, I spoke with Mr. Fidel. He was trying to work with Mobil, because this is the type of thing where he's, he sets up independence, so originally, it was going to be a golf station, but he found that Mobil seemed to be more amenable to this whole situation. And that was the last we heard, but it probably will be a name-brand station. But they're not company-owned, so in other words, it's like the hotels in Chelsea, that one company can own four different flags, as they call them, so they can own the residence in and they can own the holiday in, so they're all privately owned. It would be that type of situation. Correct me if I'm wrong in any of this.
I was just going to make a comment that I think it's a great location. It was a gas station many, many years ago, and it's been so abandoned and empty for so long, so kudos to bringing that back as what it was originally. And I just had a question in regard to the lighting and as far as how far it will go on the road, because that's a pretty dark road, especially at night, and in terms of lighting. Yeah.
Well, I think, is there a, Phil, is there a lighting plan among the many sheets that we've submitted?
Yes, there's a photometric plan at the end of the site plan. I don't know if that can get brought up. Yep, so go, yeah, keep going down, and then you work your way up from the bottom. Keep going. Right there, yep. So this is a photometric plan, and you'll see numbers in a grid-like fashion. Those are the foot candle readings. You probably can't see from that distance, but along Beecham Street, the highest foot candles are adjacent to the canopy itself, which is a reading of around two. Beyond that, we're looking at foot candles of one and less than one, so we would not consider that an extensive encroachment, so. And perhaps, since there's a new sidewalk there, it might not be a bad idea to have some light on the sidewalk as well.
Yeah, I would agree, because, I mean, it hovers over the gas station itself, the lighting, but in terms of beyond that and the entrance and the exit, and if you go beyond that area, it's pretty, it's dark.
Yeah, exactly. The lights under the gas will be recessed, so they'll be directly shielded down, as well as the site lighting will be shielded down. So there's very focused light, but inevitably, there is, I'll call it minor encroachment, which in this case, I don't think is, you know, is a bad thing.
So Ms. Crom, are you suggesting perhaps more light as a safety issue?
Yeah.
Okay, because usually, it's the reverse. It's too much light pollution, but I'm sure through design review, that can be accomplished.
Just a suggestion, because it's very dark in that area.
And it's my understanding that these lights are dimmable and adjustable, so that's my understanding, so we can take a look at that.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, this is a public hearing. It's open to the public. Does anybody want to speak on behalf or against this petitioner?
Leo Robinson, eighty-three Warren Avenue, also a city councillor. As you know, we had an ordinance on the books for a long time that no gas stations could sell coffee or sandwiches. And actually, I went in and reviewed that and amended so that the gas station would be allowed to send coffee and sandwiches. But actually, this has been a gas station since nineteen seventy, and it's an industrial area, and one of the things that they're not going to be doing, which Dennis K. Burke did, was repair vehicles there. They're not going to be repairing any vehicles there, so I just came to speak in favor of the plan and what's going to take place there. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else want to speak on this matter? Seeing none, I'll close the public speaking portion of the hearing. Anybody else have any comments? John, so, let's see, Beecham Street, standard conditions as applicable, proposed curbing to be replaced with granite curbing, and painted stopbar at each driveway exit. Are you okay with that?
Yes.
No?
I didn't hear the first one.
Oh, sorry. Did the standard conditions?
Oh, okay.
Yeah. And then proposed curbing to be replaced with granite curbing and painted stopbar at each driveway exit. Okay.
Now, just to mention, there's also one other special permit required for signage. Two are allowed, four are requested. Just to be clear, two of them would be on the canopy, and then two of them, both at street level, right, Dennis? The signs at the entrances, entrance and exit.
Okay, so now you have to tell me the conditions, the variants, the various variances.
Okay, so, question number one, the shape and topography. This is one of those dreaded triangular lots, which makes it much more difficult than usual to stay within setbacks. The lot is undersized, there's no additional land available, which abuts the site in question, so it's really impossible to meet the setback requirements strictly or to otherwise reasonably develop the parcel.
Everyone agree on that? Okay.
There, may I speak?
Oh, yes.
The second variance is for the number of signs. So you've addressed the first variance for lot size, but there's a variance for number of signs.
I thought that was a special permit.
Variance.
Okay, so, you know, just say that in order to make this an efficient business, having two signs up on the canopy, which is fairly standard gas station protocol, and then a sign at each entrance is a very reasonable variance required, again, by the triangular lot, the positioning of the entrances.
You all, are you all okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. All right, number two.
So, the owner acquired the property and paid fair market value for it. He foresaw the use of the property for a gas station. As was mentioned, it had been a gas station since the seventies. The use was abandoned, the non-conforming use was abandoned approximately three years ago, so unfortunately, he missed out on the two-year preservation and grandfathering provision. Really, this lot is meant, kind of meant to be a gas station or something similar. The purchase price is such that the construction of the gas station will sustain the cost of development while alleviating the hardship to the owner and providing very much needed services to the area.
Anyone okay with that? Okay, number three. Desirable leave may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good.
Okay, the site will be served with adequate utilities and public services. The parcel is zoned industrial and is not out of character with the neighborhood, which is kind of obvious to everyone. It's, again, the perfect fit. Adequate parking is, I can't read my own handwriting, adequate parking is required and all modern requirements for safety will be followed. I'm sorry, adequate parking is provided and all modern requirements for safety will be followed. The development will also provide substantial tax benefit to the city.
Everybody agree?
Yes.
Okay, fourth and final one. Desirable leave may be granted without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of this chapter.
So the intent of the industrial zone is to provide for, among other uses, manufacturing, distribution activities in locations with suitable access and where such activities can occur without an adverse impact on residential areas. Here, there's no impact on residential areas. The proposed use provides necessary support for the uses outlined and permitted in the zone and will, in fact, provide services away from residential areas. The use is allowed by special permit and will advance and not nullify or derogate from the intent or purpose of the ordinance.
Everyone agree? Okay. Just no more questions from the board? Do I hear a motion to accept? Motion, there's no motion to accept or reject? You make it, Joe makes a motion to?
Accept.
Is there a second? Okay, so there's a vote's been, a motion's been made to accept the case with the standard conditions, proposed concrete curbing to be replaced with granite curbing and painted stopbar at each driveway exit. Is there a second? All those in favor, sorry.
Aye.
Sorry. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Would you please send me your list of reasons for the variance so we can include it in the decision? I have this. Sorry, I meant to give it to you at the last. I have to have DPW comments relative to the I and I.
Thank you. Okay, the next case is twenty twenty-four dash thirteen, fifty-seven Palmer Street, James Christopher.
My name is James Christopher, six-eight-six Architects, with the business address, ten Forbes Road. I'm joined by Matt Eckle, legal counsel for the project. You want to put your firm in?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Attorney Matt Eckle from Fletcher Tilton, with the business address of one hundred Front Street.
We're here tonight on behalf of fifty-seven Palmer Street and the variance request for the construction of a new two-unit residential building. We met with the zoning, after the initial meeting with the zoning board, I met with some neighbors and discussed the project, and their primary concern was drainage and runoff. I was able to discuss with them that this project would include the installation of a cul-de-sac water recharge system so that on our site, we will be able to manage and recharge all the water, and so that those, I think that was the primary concern of the abutters. There was also an issue at seventy-five Palmer. Initially, I filed an application for both lots. Seventy-five has since been removed because these lots were owned in common. It's been sold. I now have a plan ready to file, I'm ready to file with the building department for an easement on seventy-five Palmer, which will take care of a parking violation that's created, but it is included in our site plan. So if we go to the, this is our, the site here, fifty-seven is the proposed new building with a front yard setback of nineteen foot six, side yard setback on the right one facing, which is on Nessie Road, is ten foot nine, and then to the left side is eight foot eight, and we are at fifteen foot four to the rear of the property. Next slide, please.
This is the revised plan.
Oh, this is the revised, I'm sorry. So that, this also includes the easement, so we are basically, we're creating two, the existing curb cuts are on the side already, it's a huge parking, we're using those curb cuts, and then the existing, the proposed use will be added here. It's seven foot by fifty foot easement. And- I apologize, can you slide please? Sorry. Sorry. So I was illustrating on the drawing that the easement is fifty feet wide, fifty feet long and seven feet wide, which will create the parking for the abutting building. And then if we could go to my plans, I can walk through the building plans if that's-
Is this what you're looking for?
Yes, next slide. This illustrates just the area in the site. Next slide, please. Next slide. Next slide, go down to the plan. Next slide. That illustrates the building on the photograph, on an aerial overlay of, just an image, so you can see the existing curb cuts and where that easement will be proposed. Next slide, please. So this is just some, again, site photographs. The existing garage on the left of the upper right photograph will be raised as a part of this project. You can see the existing curb cuts where we'll enter into the new building. Next slide, please. This is our proposed site use plan, so around the building will be primarily green space. Each unit will have a fifteen foot five by nineteen foot six space of green space that will be theirs, tucked in behind their unit, with the rear egress and access from the front and rear of the properties. We tried to cite the building so that we were not disrupting the view across the corner, as our building is on a corner. Tried to cite it to the rear, and that is how we arrived at our site setbacks. Next slide. This is our unit layout plan, so at grade, we have interior parking for two units, for two cars for each unit, and then on the first living level, which is the second floor, we have six hundred square feet of living space, which includes a bathroom and living and dining. Next slide, please. And then on the third floor, we have two bedrooms and a bathroom, two bathrooms, one for each bedroom, and then the common stairs in the middle. Next slide, please. That's our roof plan. Next slide. In elevation, during the discussion with the planning department, we discussed the relative blandness of the front elevation, and we agreed to look at redesigning the front elevation to include, you know, maybe an eyebrow roof over the garage doors and some more shadow lines and details along the front elevation, which we're happy to accommodate. And then the overall height is thirty feet, thirty-five feet, sorry. Next slide, please. This is our rear elevation, which shows the bump out where the stairs access the rear. We have a pretty consistent and symmetrical fenestration pattern, and so we feel like it's a very effective building. Next slide, please. And then these are our opposite side end elevations. This is our building sections, which just show the floor to ceiling and the assembly of the overall height of the building.
That's it.
Thank you. So with that, we'll turn it over to the board to answer any questions.
John, can you go back to the green area with the plan, where the plan showed the green area? I'm sorry. Can you go back to the plan where it shows the green area? From the corner on the left side, right, what the driveway right now is, right?
That will change. There will be a little bit more pavement there.
You say you're going to put a green area right on the left side?
So originally, when we proposed this, we weren't in planning for that easement that happened as a result of the sale. Initially, we were planning to have this full strip-
Please bring the mic with you.
So we had, this strip would have been green, but now with the easement, this will be paved. We discussed with the planning board, all of the paving in the project will be pervious, so the driveways and the new proposed driveway for the easement will be pervious.
Well, do you have a plan to put any fence on that side?
No, on the left side, there'll be no fence.
So will be grass and then rest of the asphalt?
We'll come up with a transition. I think it'll probably be pavers, so the space between our building, we have a few feet on the edge of our building, that might end up being, you know, mulch and some flowers and shrubs, and the space towards the front of the building will be the pavers for the parking.
And the electric poles, no issue with it?
We'll have to deal with that during engineering. If it has to be relocated, we'll, we'll deal with DPW, but I, I don't think that, I think we can work around it.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anybody from the public that would just speak on this case? Name and address to them, please.
Name is Fred Wilkins. I reside at 105 Springville Ave., which is right around the corner from this. I represent the, the club that is on the right-hand side of Aneisi as well. I have a deed that indicates that this lot, as originally presented to the board, was for 57 and 75. Nowhere in the deed do I find lot number 57. I do find a deed in 2007 from the sellers that lived across the street that deeded their, their trust to these total properties, all, all of the lots, as one number 75. All of a sudden, they sold it in May of 2024, probably less than 30 days before they came to the board and said, "We want a, a subdivision." And that was taken off the board at the next meeting and said, "No, it's only 57. There is no lot 57." So I don't know who had, does not have the facts right. I have the deeds for you if you would like to take a, a look at them. Additionally, the big problem here, which was the initial problem, was the drainage. We take away green space, we have no drainage. We, we have been complaining about this area for years, and now we're taking away more green space. We know that the water penetrates the ground. I have seen no plan that, that shows me where that water is gonna end up, none whatsoever. So, uh, this 75 Palmer was parcel one, two, and three, not 57. 57 is not mentioned at all in the legal documents. So if you would like them, I'm happy to present them to you.
Sure.
I wish that consideration could be taken to this because I think it's, it's...
Thank you. Does anybody else want to speak on this?
Arthur Ellis, 45 Palmer Street, Chelsea. I live right adjacent to 75, and I've been there for 47 years. As Fred said, we have water problems there, and I mean water problems. Now, when, you know, the board before this and, you know, I just don't know where people get the idea that nothing happens there. Because big things happen. I was with the state yesterday, to be honest with you, and they're, they're gonna take care of the flooding as far as the culvert going underneath Route 1. But the problem is, even in the street with the sewer line, we have a six-inch sewer line, that's about this big, that what happens when the street floods and it's gonna flood in a heavier rain, the water gets in the sewer line and everybody's house gets flooded with sewage. So in saying this, I mean, the big problem, you know, is basically water. They've been told, you know, I mean, they're coming up with a thing where it should address it, but where does it go after it goes into wherever they're, they're putting it? I, I have no idea, you know? And it's the sewer line. Where, is that coming down Palmer Street? Is it going down Aneisi Road? I mean, these are big questions for the people that live there. And, you know, I don't know if people on the other board or you people even know where Palmer Street is. You know, it's up behind Volk Park. It's a quiet street, but we have a water problem. So, I mean, I just want you to really take this into consideration before you're okay. The house is beautiful, believe me. I, I think it's great. It can only be wonderful for the, you know, the area. But we have to address this as far as all the other people that live there every day. And the main thing is water and that sewer line. Now, I know in time, you know, we say they're gonna replace things. Who knows? I mean, I won't be around when that gets replaced, but, you know, but just take it into consideration. That's, you know, I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any comments or questions? Okay, I'm gonna close the public participation portion. John, would you like to comment on maybe the deed or the, maybe the sewer, the, the water issues?
Relative to our water source, you did get a, the board did get a report from the DPW that did not mention that as an issue.
Okay.
Relative to the deed, I am looking through the deeds now, and from the description in the deeds, they seem to describe two separate parcels. One, 75 Palmer Street, and the other, an unnumbered parcel immediately adjacent to it. So I do see two, two separate parcels.
All right, I'll open it up. Do you have, just one more question?
Not too scarce of what, John, did you say there was noth- nothing mentioned as a problem with, from the DPW, that there were no issues with water?
In the report that was provided to the board, there was no mention relative to a drainage issue up there.
Obviously, nobody in that board is up in and up the Palmer Street when it rains. You know what I mean? I mean, how could, we live there. How could they even say that? Do you know what I mean? How about the people on Columbus Street that got flooded and lost everything in their homes this past spring? And there's no issue with water? And that's, you know, I mean, basically, there's gotta be a prob, I, I don't understand...
That's not, that's not what I said. I said they didn't mention it.
Oh, okay. All right. They didn't mention it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now it's closed. All right, would like the petitioner or the, or your lawyer like to speak?
I'll go on the, the water issue.
Okay.
You know, the, the abutting sites, we can't control. The runoff happens and it's affected by grade and all those sorts of things. The, what we can control on our site is the, how we handle and manage the water on our site. With the cultech recharge system, that's basically a large holding tank. It's buried in the ground. It's, it's sized by a civil engineer to be large enough to withstand 100 years' rain event. So that's supposed to be more rain than we're ever gonna get, and it can take that water, drain it into its tank, hold it, and then over time, when the earth is ready, the earth will receive it. It drains out naturally. So that, that's the intent of the, of the runoff. A lot of times in these instances, we improve the water runoff because as we fix our driveways and our abutting driveway and those sorts, we can't have our pitch affect our abuddins. It pitches towards our site and then towards our, our cultech system. So these systems are, they've become more and more common. They're part of the building code now, and they're very effective. I'm not gonna, it won't solve the water problem, but I think it will improve the runoff condition on our side.
Okay. Would I just speak on behalf of, I guess, the deed, the deed, he just mentioned the deeds. Do you have, do you have any comments?
I, I would just echo the comments that were put on the record, that there are two separate distinct parcels. Obviously, a deed from time to time, parcels travel together. These are denoted as two different parcels, you know, within the city's own GIS system, so they have been known as separate, even though they're combined in a deed. That does happen from time to time. The number 57, I believe, was assigned to us throughout this process, but it's not uncommon that parcels without livable or having the structures actually have a number. Sometimes they're just known as a parcel ID. So these have been two distinct parcels for as long as we know.
Okay. Any further comments, John?
Relat-, again, relative to the drainage, I am recommending a condition that the petitioner provide the department with a drainage report to be reviewed and approved by the department and, and the DPW.
Okay. All right, is there any questions from the board? All right, I'll read you the recommended conditions. Standard conditions as applicable, a landscaping plan to be reviewed and approved by permitting and land use planning determined for review and approval. A lighting plant submitted to the...
Permitting and land...
Permitting and land use planning for review and approval. Recommend permeable pavers and the drainage plant submitted to the permitting and land use planning department for review and approval.
Agreed.
Are those conditions okay?
Agreed, yes.
Okay. What is the pleasure of the board? Oh, yeah. You have to answer the variance questions. Okay. Oh, you have to, yeah, can you state them? So the variance is sought because of soil conditions, shape or topography of such land or structure, and especially affecting such land or structures, but not affecting generally the zoning district in which it is located.
Sure, so as you can, oh, we switched off. But as you saw previously, the shape of the lot is, is somewhat unique. It, it not only is angled on the side, it is a corner lot, and it also is kind of an abnormally shallow lot, as you can see in our abutting property directly to the left. And as you go down the street, most of the lots go a little deeper because we're a corner lot, we're a very shallow lot. So it is a very unique lot, and then it's a corner lot, and it's, it's shallow on Palmer Street.
Does anybody agree with that? Okay. Second one, a little enforcement of the provisions of this chapter would involve a substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to the petitioner or applicant.
So yes, in this case, a little enforcement would involve, excuse me, substantial hardship, specifically financially. This use that we're proposing is, is quite common and allowed, and based upon the, the shape of the lot and whatnot, it does trigger the need for some relief, but to not be granted that relief would essentially, because it's an undersized lot already, basically render the lot useless. So with the rising cost of construction and acquisition, to not be able to, to build this as proposed would be a substantial financial hardship.
Do you agree with that, John? The board, what does the board feel? Yes, okay. Desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good.
Once again, we believe this proposal's in character, you know, with the neighborhood in terms of size and scale. We don't believe it'd be detrimental to the public good. It would create housing and increase the tax base for this lot.
Yeah. The board agree with that? Desirable relief may be granted without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of this chapter.
Yeah, the, the intent of the, the zone within this chapter is residential housing, which we're, which we're seeking. It's somewhat typical in this neighborhood, and we don't believe granting the relief would, would nullify from the intent of this chapter. It's actually within the spirit of the code, we believe.
Yes.
Okay. Is there a motion to accept or reject this ca-, um, application?
I'm not, I'm not supporting this project.
So you make a motion to reject?
Reject.
That's it, right? You have to vote. Okay. All right, so all those of the...
So a motion, I'm sorry. A motion was made to deny approval. It was, that's, motion was seconded.
Yeah.
So, you know, you have to vote on that matter.
So do we, so if I said no?
You're not gonna get a majority. They will, it will not pass.
So then it has to be, so then what happens after that?
They can, you can withdraw at this point before the vote is taken, or you can wait till the vote is taken, then you won't be able to withdraw. It, it requires, the, both the variance and the special permit require a minimum of four votes to pass. It looks like you're gonna have two, two, you're gonna have two and two at best. It will not pass. The motion to either deny or to approve will probably not pass.
Okay. So a motion has been made to reject the petition. It's been seconded. Now, they have the opportunity to withdraw with prejudice?
Without prejudice.
Without prejudice.
It's up, it's up to the board.
Okay. I would recommend that there's a, that you ask for a withdrawal with, without prejudice, right? Without prejudice, right? Without prejudice, because it's not gonna pass.
At this time, could we respectfully request the continuance or deferral and perhaps provide some additional information to the board?
That's, the board would have to identify the information that would influence their vote, so, but that's up to the board as well.
Would you, Hulgo, would you want them, if they could present more information or maybe a better proposal? Would you accept that?
A better proposal, maybe, yeah, we can look at it.
What's the detriment of the proposal?
I'm sorry?
What don't you like about the proposal?
No, no, I mean, I'm okay with the plan and everything, but I think the, the lot size is a little too small for what you want to do in, in that lot.
So, again...
What would you, what would they need?
Because by rights, they can build only one, is that right?
I'm sorry, I'm...
By right, they can build only one unit.
By right?
By right.
They don't, they don't have a minimum lot size to build any units.
I'm sorry.
The, the minimum lot size is 7,500 square feet.
Yeah, but they have 4,000.
And that's why they're asking for the variance relief. So if you're, you're more concerned with the number, so you're saying...
It's not the number, it's the lot size. The thing, whatever they want to do is a little too much for their lot size.
Yeah.
I guess from our perspective, there's just a little, the, the use of a two-family is allowed, and it seems that everyone agreed with the standards for the variance, so we're just caught a little off guard here with this.
The, the use of a two-family is allowed on a 7,500 square foot or, and a minimum 3,500 per unit.
Sure.
Which you don't need. Hence, the request for the variance.
Exactly.
So... If, if you're requesting continuation, the board has to give you some idea of what you need to do in order to get a positive vote, so... And, and it's up to the board whether you want to grant that continuation or not.
What would you want to do? Continue it until like next month, or how long would you like to continue it for?
Well, we could, I could be ready to come back next month, sure.
Well, I guess then maybe Hulgo and, and Joe, what, what are your concerns? Maybe that's what it, you know, is it too big for the, for the lot?
Is it, if I may, is it, is it the size of the building or the unit count? Dimensionally, you know, we need relief if we were to do a single family. So is it, is it two units or is it the size of the building?
I don't know, I don't know for Joe, but for me...
Well, the, the unit size is 1,310. Required is 3,500. So what you're looking for is almost three times the size, because if it were 1,300 square feet, three would be 3,900 square feet. So I think the size of the units impact the total footage of the lot.
May I just clarify that? The 3,500 is the minimum lot size per unit. It's not the unit size, it's the lot size.
Yes.
Okay.
I think the, the concern for me would be the drainage issue, you know, like when residents come, you know, that, that are neighbors that are abutters of the building, and they're, they come up and they testify, you know, and they say, hey, we have this ongoing problem and nothing's happening, you know, and they're all for the property, but they're asking for a solution on the drainage issue. And I think that that's big, a big concern. For me, that's like a red flag, saying, hey, maybe, it's beautiful, you know, the building that you want to put there, it's very nice, I'm not, you know, I think it's great, you know, it's more housing, which, you know, we can always, you know, have in the city, but I think one of the concerns for me is the drainage. So perhaps if you come back with your plan like you were planning on doing, um, and maybe we can talk about it, because right now it's, you know, like talk about it more in detail, and how is that gonna alleviate? I mean, clearly, you don't know if it's gonna solve the problem that's there, you know, might solve the problem within the new property that's gonna be built there, but, I mean, technically, is it all your responsibility too? Because that, that's also, you know, something to question, like, you're putting that there, but it's also a city issue, you know, it's a city issue that should be addressed.
Typically...
Kind of thing.
So the way that we address these projects is, you know, the front end is schematic design and design development, which is what we're working on now. The engineering is done later, because if we just lost tonight, all that money would have been spent on engineering, waste.
Yeah.
The, the water runoff from other sites, we cannot affect, we cannot touch other people's sites. So, um, we will not improve the sites around us. We will improve ours, it's part of the building. It's not, it's not a suggestion, it's not us being, um, chivalrous neighbors, it's, it's a requirement. And it would be designed and reviewed fully upon approval. We, we can certainly talk to our civil engineer and, and put that together, um, and, and start getting it engaged. But it's just normally, in any case, that, that type of engineering would not be done until you knew you were building it.
I, I, I'm sorry, I disagree with that. The board generally does get drainage plans with their, frequently gets drainage plans with their cementals.
Okay.
And I don't think it's unreasonable of them asking for it.
I, I, I think if, again, we reiterate our request for continuance, we could come back with some additional drainage information, and maybe take a look at the building footprint to see if we can expand the green space somewhat. We're obviously designing, uh, kind of the first level to accommodate the parking requirements and keep the cars off the streets, but if we can shrink that down a little bit, uh, we'd, we'd be happy to take a look at that and, and come back and, and re-present it please at the board.
I'm open to that.
Hugo, that's good.
Joe.
All right, so, well...
A motion to continue to the August thirteenth meeting.
All right, who, do I hear a motion to continue?
Make a motion to continue to the August thirteenth.
Second? All those in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm gonna make sure I'm here now.
Okay, we're gonna go out of order. Hold on, let's see, Palmer Street. Oh, yeah, okay, so we're gonna do four sixty-nine Washington Ave, four sixty-nine Washington Ave LLC. The petitioner has requested that we move this meeting to September, September tenth. Do you have a motion?
I make a motion.
Second? All those in favor? Aye. Okay, the next case is same thing, two eighteen, two thirty Broadway, two eighteen, two thirty Broadway LLC. Uh, the petitioner has requested to move the meeting, move the petition to September tenth, twenty twenty, uh, September tenth. Is there a motion to...
I make a motion.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. All right, the next case is twenty twenty-four dash fifteen, eleven John Street, Arturo Hernandez. So this is a special permit in variance, and this will be, uh, going to the planning board on...
On, on, uh, July twenty-third.
So July twenty-third, this goes to the back, to the planning board, July thir- twenty-third, and it comes back to us on August, um, tenth.
Thirteen?
No. So then it comes back to the, back to us on August thirteenth. State your name, uh, your address, and, uh, what you are proposing.
Hi, uh, my name is Arturo Hernandez, uh, I'm requesting three.
Do you need, uh, translation?
Uh, yeah. That I'm requesting, uh, three parking spaces, uh, I believe this will benefit my, the neighbors and, uh, my tenants, especially the ones with, that have little kids. So I request this parking spaces, uh, six months ago, and they told me to come back with another plan with three parking spaces. So, I mean, I'm just trying to get, uh, my, my tenants, uh, create a safer environment for the, for the little kids. You know how during the winter, they have to park like five blocks away from their residence?
Okay.
So...
John, do you have any comments?
In a manner, uh, provided some additional information.
Okay. Uh, does the board have any questions right now?
I just wanna know, like, what size the house is, and why do you need so many parking spaces?
So I'm just requesting three parking spaces. We have the, the, the property has enough space for, for more parking, but, uh, as, I'm just requesting three parking spaces, uh, just to, to have, uh, you know, like, my tenants have little kids and...
How many apartments do you have there?
Three units.
Three units?
Yes.
And you currently have parking now?
No.
No parking?
No parking at all.
Okay. And you want three spaces? And they're tandem parking?
I'm sorry?
Tandem, lined up?
As you can see, we did the, uh, the plan for five, for five parking spaces, but I'm only requesting three.
The picture, the picture shows five parking spaces, and you say you, you want three?
Yes, I'm only requesting three, uh, but we have no space for more, but, uh, if you can, if we can do three, the, that'll be...
You, you need, you need to bring something that says, what are you saying? Because it says five on all the paper we have, it says five parking spaces, now you're saying three. And you're kind of confusing, because, uh, whatever, uh, you write down here, you want three, but the picture shows here five.
Yes.
So either we're three or five.
No, it's because I was here, uh, five months ago, I request five, and then they told me to come back with another plan for, for three, but, I mean, I'm using the same plan that I used last year.
Perfect, nothing has changed from last year? Or last time, nothing has changed from last year?
Nothing has changed, no.
The plans haven't changed, he just wants to use the same plans to say instead of five, he's gonna have three.
But where, go ahead.
But where? Which, which three?
I'm sorry?
Which three spaces are you looking for? You're showing five, which three are you, are you...
Yeah, it would be the two, two, three, and four.
So you, you need to come in with a revised plan.
Okay, yeah.
You have to re, bring a revised plan, because right now that plan shows that you have, that you want five spaces.
Okay.
But if you just want two, three, and four, you need to show, give John a plan that shows two, three, and four only.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I was told that I can use the same plan, just, so, that's...
Because it's a little confusing for us, because we're looking at this, and we see five spaces, and then when, when you're talking, you say three.
Yeah.
So we're like, okay.
Yes, uh, just, I brought this one just so you know that we have enough, enough space for, for more parking, but, uh, just requesting three.
But that, that's on the side of the house that's being used as a sidewalk?
It's not a sidewalk, I'm paying taxes for that, so that's part of my property.
That's part of your property.
I do recall you coming back, and it was a five, and now it's reduced to three, which is good, but I'm wondering if you, um, had any success, um, in, um, coming to an agreement with the abutter that had come prior to, in terms of working out an amicable decision in term, um, for, for the parking.
So as far as, uh, the neighbors, uh, the rest of the neighbors, they all parking on the street with no permit, using the street as a parking, and using my property as a driveway. So, I mean, that's another issue, because the rest of the tenants don't have parking, I'm just here trying to do the right thing, you know, asking for parking permits, uh, that's all.
What's in the front of your house?
I'm sorry?
What's in the front of the house?
A street.
No, no, I'm saying, uh, is a green area, is it, uh, um, what's in front of, you know, we see that porch, with the front porch? Yeah, what does, where do you have enough space?
That's a yard. That's a yard.
Any other questions from the board? This is a public, uh, hearing, and this will not be the last time you're able to speak on this matter. It goes before the planning board and then back to the zoning board. So, um, somebody wants to come in and speak?
Yes.
Name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Maria Medina, and I own eleven and a half John Street. So I did went to see an attorney, and he told me no one should park on the passageway. It belongs to me and my tenants too. My tenants always park on the street, and they never have one problem. So why his tenants should park and my tenants cannot park? They never, never parked there. That's for me to walk and my tenants and his tenants. So they've been doing all the time. I don't know how many times I came with pictures to the inspector. They've been parking every day. They didn't obey the attorney, they obey, they don't obey the inspector, they do whatever they want, they park every day, trucks, cars, motorcycles, everything. So I don't know what to do, I've been with this for a long time.
Okay.
That belongs to me too, it's on my deed.
Okay.
That's not a parking lot, that's a passageway for people to walk, and it's getting all damaged from parking the cement, and don't forget that I have my pipes, they have water pipe, sewer pipes, the weight, it's very dangerous though. I told Mr. Arturo the other day, one little crack, it costs millions to fix. So that's something that he has to think about. It's getting all damaged from the weight of the cars, it's going like in, down, you could see like the cement like this. That's all I need to say. That's not a parking. I told you, Mr. Arturo, it's something, a little crack, it's gonna cost thousands of dollars to fix.
Yeah.
And I'm not gonna pay.
And you, and we have your notes that you sent to...
Yeah, you have all my papers, all lawyer papers, everything.
Yeah, so I'll send, we'll give them to the board.
Yes, yeah, like I said, it's dangerous to park over there. Though, the weight, you should see the cars that you used to park before, trucks, big trucks. I've been through so much on that house, that's one day I'm gonna have to move. I had enough. They don't obey no one, not even a lawyer, you know, not even the court, nothing.
Okay.
So...
Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you. Anybody else want to speak on this matter? We're gonna keep this open, uh, for the public participation. John, do you have any comments about, um, the weight of the cars and affecting the pipes and anything like that that she's...
The plans do not show him parking on the passageway, it shows him parking on his own property, so I don't see how it's affecting the access. I'm, I'm not advocating for or against it, but I'm just providing you from, I'm, I'm, I guess I'm confused from the abutters' point of view, that parking on the passageway when his plans show him parking on his own property, so...
Okay, I will let you, um, respond. The board's gonna maybe have some questions, but then you go, they're gonna go through the planning board after this.
Okay, so what she said, uh, the, the passageway belongs to her, I brought the, the plans of my property, that's my property, she thinks, uh, that she owns the sidewalk, which that's not a sidewalk, that's my property, uh...
Well, while the sidewalk is not your property, right?
The sidewalk in front of the house is not the property.
It's not, oh, yes.
Yes.
Is, is the sidewalk the public prop, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just want clarification. Is the sidewalk the property owners, or is it the city's?
The sidewalk, the sidewalk here on the street is the city's.
Yes. She thinks the sidewalk is where the parking lot is.
I think they're referring to this as the sidewalk.
I'm not too concerned.
Uh, I understand, I don't know, we got, we got your, we got your notes, we got your notes.
So the sidewalk in front of the house, adjacent to the street, is the city's property, not... But I, I think they're referring to this, the way that you see the two, three, four, five as a sidewalk, at least I think that's what the gentleman is, is referring to as a sidewalk.
So, so the, like, to the right of the numbers, John?
Yes.
That's the sidewalk?
No, it's not a si- it's not a sidewalk.
It's like a walkway.
It's part of their property.
It's part of...
My, my property.
It's part of yours.
Part of his property.
I have the plans, you see the black door line, that's my property. Her house is the one behind my house, so she think, she thinks she owns the, all the...
But she has an easement?
Does she have an easement?
We have the...
She has the right to cross that path?
But we have the street, I mean, the size of my property.
Yeah.
And then we have the street, and it's not, the parking will not be blocking the street, will not be blocking anything.
But it's the, it's the, if there's an easement, if there's a walkway and it's an easement, you know, that's, now you have to honor that easement, is that correct?
Well, the, the plan is showing thi- this, these two as the easement, as a ten-foot wide easement all the way up to the rear of the parcel.
So, so if that's blocked, that, that becomes an issue for her?
It's not gonna be, it won't be blocked.
Or...
But that's not, that's not where he's asking to park.
Well, no, I know, but like, all right, if I'm pulling into that lot, like, is, is he making sure that he's pulling in to, all the way to the left? That he's not pulling in his cars, like, on the right-hand side, and then moving to the left into the parking spot?
That's a question.
You know, so...
So as soon as you drive in, you can easily park next to the...
So when you pull into, to the parking area?
Yes.
You make sure that you stay on the left-hand side, that you're not, you're not blocking the easement, that you're not parking on the easement side?
Yeah, you can, you can...
That you're not blocking her area, her entryway, that you're not parking in the back?
Nothing, everything will be inside the, 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 will be the easement, and then my property is like, everything will be, nothing will be blocked.
Okay.
Can I show you something, please?
Any other questions before I let her speak again? Go ahead.
Would it be helpful if a, uh, map was set up or designed and have a line mod so that we would know exactly what we're talking about and where the three spaces are gonna be? Because right now, um, we're looking at something that's not accurate.
No, no, Joe, that is, Michael.
Oh, I'm sorry. I got a new hearing aid, and everything seems loud, so I thought it was not... I got a new hearing aid and everything seems loud, so I thought it was talking loud. Sorry. It's, it's a matter that to have a map design of how are you going to set it up? And then a line marking permanently so that the neighbors can see where your property ends and where they have the ability to move about. I think that might be a very helpful.
I brought another plan where you can see better than this one. I don't know if you have it with you. There's another plan that shows.
Is this what you're referring to?
Yes. That was the plan for five parking spaces.
Right. But yeah, you gotta show us the third, you gotta show us the three spaces.
Yeah, so. So the reason I brought this is because I thought I could use, so you, I can show you that I have enough space for more, more cars.
And then how do the cars get out? They gotta pull out? If that, that third car, how does that, how's the other, how's that third car get out?
So the, the three is right here, so then you can just back out?
So the other cars are gonna have to back out. So if that, that third car from the bottom wants to get out and there's two cars out front, the other two cars are, the other two cars are gonna have to back out to allow the third car to get out.
So if there's going to be parking, if it is, it is back out?
No, I know, but it is, but the other two cars, all the cars will have to move out for that third car to leave.
Say that again, sorry?
So that third car right there, right, the third car?
The one on the top.
No, 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 the third one in the middle that says right near the building, right? That's the third car, right? And if you have the two cars on the bottom, if they're there, those two cars will have to move.
No, so we have enough space so they can use exit out easily because the street is right next to it.
So you have to reverse out, right? You can't move around.
Yeah, like every, like the rest of the neighbors, they just reverse out when they just want to.
Right, so that, so all the cars gotta reverse out, let the car out, right?
The neighbors' car, they all reverse.
They reverse out, let the, let the third car come out and then they go back in?
Yes, so.
I just wanted to, right?
That's how she gets out, the other neighbors, the other neighbors.
Right.
So it will be the same thing for everybody. I mean, just trying to do the right thing, you know, requesting parking spaces. I don't know, I already received three tickets and they were dismissed because the guy said, I mean, I think this is a great idea because you're taking some cars out of the streets. I mean, you know how parking here, it's, it's a big issue? And, I mean, just want to help the neighbors and my tenants.
Yeah, and I agree it is most helpful to have off-street parking. So I have, the concern is it just feels tight and it feels hindering, right? And in terms of good neighbor, and so her home is facing the driveway.
Yes.
And in terms of lightage and cars moving in and out and, you know, glaring, glaring into her home when the lights are on and all that motion just seems a lot in a small space. So that's one concern I have. And the other is that walkway kind of just meshes in with the driveway. Is there a barrier there or something that if someone's walking up the walkway and the door opens, what separates that driveway from the walkway per se? That you can ensure that it's safe and, and, and that the walkway has access to get to your neighbors' place?
So, I mean, I don't know why her, the neighbor, and the other neighbors parking there with no, nobody complains, nobody say anything. They don't have a parking. As you can see, I mean, and she's parking on my property. I brought pictures too. Parking right on the corner of my property. I mean, I never said anything. I'm just requesting parking for me, for, so she has her own parking, my tenants have parking, the neighbors have parking and I'm the only one not having parking. And I'm the only one trying to do the right thing, requesting the permit, doing the right thing.
Sorry, do you park in the driveway as well?
No, I have my line. I only park in one car. It's only one space for my car. It's all the way at the end.
But she doesn't have parking.
I'm living here for like sixteen years. I always, you know, but my tenants don't, no, they have to park outside.
Have you requested a permit for parking?
No, they, they have it.
No, have you?
Uh, sir.
Can I show you something, really?
Sorry.
Can I show you something?
Is this in the, is this on what she's showing? Yeah, she just wants to show us pictures or something.
Just.
Did you, did you submit that to the, the board already?
Uh, no, I don't think so. I just want you to see the ways, what he's, what he's talking about.
I have the camera of my property if you want to see.
The ways he wants to park is going to be on, on the middle of the driveway because this is my.
Excuse me, excuse me, can you come up so we can see, please? Thank you.
That was one of the, my questions, if, oh, no, hold on, hold on, hold on. Could you have copies of that? Can you give this to the? Yes.
You can't keep.
Do, no, but you have.
Copies of that?
All right.
So it's a common right-of-way in both deeds.
No, also supposed to find this.
This is the, this is the common right-of-way.
Mm-hmm, yes.
This is his property.
Yes.
But is, John, is enough paid if you someone, the neighbors are parking on the other side? Like in this picture, right? Like in this picture. This is the other side, the front of, of the other neighbor.
And it's not like they park.
So. So that neighbor is using, it's parking on the common area. That's why he parks like three cars, no permits, nothing, and I'm the one getting tickets for, for, I don't know why.
Is someone, you park?
No.
Right now on that, and you're on those spaces?
I don't know who parks there. I, I.
No, no, I'm saying your property, right? Because this picture shows that you already marked the spaces. So that means you're parking, you're parking there.
They're the ones who did this, yeah. They marked everything without a permit, nothing.
But where are you parking?
I, I don't, nobody parks there.
Nobody parks.
Nobody. So the neighbors, I showed the picture, as you can see.
So is, if the neighbors are parking this side of the street and you park here, there's enough paid for other cars to go by? It will be enough paid for the fire department or the fire trucks to go there?
Yeah.
So the neighbor is bi- bi-railing the, the entrance. He not supposed to park there because that's the entrance. He's, that's not his property. That's the, the common area.
Exactly.
What I'm requesting, it's all inside my property. It won't be blocking the street. It won't be blocking anything. So if I get this approved, the neighbor has to park, move all the cars from there because he, he hasn't requested anything and he has no space for that. So he's parking cars on, on, on the, on the side of his house and they're using my property to go her, to drive up to, to her house.
Most of the time, it's like when he have parties, he has like two or three cars, then they leave. And you already, I spoke to him. I told him, you, you cannot do that. Can you please move those cars? And he did move one. He only has one now. And he said that the guy is going to come and get it, that something left a car there. There's no plates on the car, nothing. So I don't know what happened.
So she's, he's taking advantage of, of, because if somebody parks on my property, I get the tickets. And if he parks cars there, nobody do, he doesn't get a ticket or anything, so.
Anyways, this has to go to the planning board and then comes back to us. I would like to go down and, and, and look at that property. John, can we have a, can we go, can we set up a meeting? I mean, someone should go down there because this is all very confusing. I'm listening to and seeing pictures and I don't have no idea what people are talking about.
You, you're allowed to go down there. You, you can't go on the property without their permission.
No, I know, right. No, no, that's what I'm saying to you.
Yes.
But, I mean, can we get the, uh.
If, would, if the board wants to go down and see, do you both give permission to go on the property?
Oh, yes, of course.
Yeah.
We just want to see what you guys are.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, I'm just here trying to do the right thing.
I, no, no, I understand that she is too, but so when you said.
But what I don't understand is their house never, never had parking. I went to U P the taxes. They give me, they told me no. They, they, they don't have parking at all, zero. It says zero.
I understand. No, no, I.
I don't get it. I don't get the picture.
I, I understand all that. I just need to see what he's talking about and what you're talking about.
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I have to see it. I can't, it's, you know, so. So does the board want to go down and see it? Because I can't understand what people are saying, right?
Yes.
So, John, can you just?
You want me to set up a site visit on the Saturday?
Please, along with those two.
On the, on the Saturday?
Like I said, even when everybody's there.
No, you could go anytime you want.
It won't be this Saturday because I have a site visit elsewhere, so.
Whatever, whatever it is, because I need to, need to see it. I, you know.
Also, the survey, I went there to measure everything and I was there that day and the supervisor told me that if they do park, they cannot park here, just walk.
No, 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 I understand.
Yeah.
No, I understand all that. I need to see it.
I was there when they went there too.
No, 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 I understand.
She's over there.
Okay.
All right, yeah, see, and then you guys are bickering back and forth, so. Yeah, so we're gonna, this is gonna continue to the planning board and then come back to the zoning board. And John's gonna set up a, send a notice because I have to go down and see it. I have no idea what you guys are talking about. You know, I have to see it, right?
Yeah.
You know, pictures and.
That's fine, that's fine.
And plans don't mean a thing to me. I have to go down and see, oh, now I see what you, what you both are talking about. Okay, all right, so I'm gonna close this. We will continue till next month, okay?
Okay. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And we get to, we have to keep those? You go.
Oh, you give them?
If they show it to you, it's, you have to go in the record.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, we'll get copies, we'll get copies.
I thought you was gonna.
All right, which one are we doing now?
Fifty-three Hurd.
No, that's one great. Okay, last case. Fifty-three Hurd Street, Rafael Serrano.
Good evening.
Do you need translation? Do you need translation?
Uh, no, just nervous. My first time, sorry.
Okay. Name, address?
Rafael Serrano, fifty-three Hurd Street. And I'm here to try to convert my two family into a three family.
Okay. Do you have pictures of before and after? Could you show, John, do we have pictures before, maybe of before, after, or? Okay. So that's the house?
That's the house, yeah.
I think that, yep, but. Then interior pictures.
Yeah. And then how do you propose making it a three-family? Do you, is it gonna be, are you gonna do?
It is a, it's a, it's a flat roof. I think this picture would look better.
Sorry.
It's a flat-roofed roof on the third floor. And I just want to do an addition and try to do the stairs, egress, they call it. And convert into a three-family.
The flat roof into, you want to?
Yeah, it's a flat roof, but, but no, it's basically an apartment because it's three levels already.
So it's, so it's a two-family, but there's three levels you want to convert?
It's three level and then it has a flat roof.
Got it.
And I want to just make it bigger on the flat roof.
But there are already three floors. You just want to make the third one bigger?
Exactly, and, and convert into a three. And I have five garages and three garages on the other side. And I think I have plenty of space for parking. Or if, you know.
Okay, is there, John, do you have any, any comments from the board right now?
I have not gone to the planning board yet, other than, what's in the report, I have, I know on the.
No, no, but any initial comments or anything like that, John?
Um, not yet.
Okay. Any questions from the board right now?
What size unit is it going to be? Like how many bedrooms?
Uh, so it already has one and a half upstairs with a bathroom and like a kitchen in it. So I'm just trying to make on top of the flat roof, um, a bathroom, well, a master bedroom and then like the living room and then the stairs going down.
Okay.
This is two-family unit? I mean, house, two-family? This is two-family, right?
It's a two-family, three levels.
You live there?
Yes.
On what unit?
I live on the first floor now, yeah.
So how many bedrooms are in the second unit?
The second floor has two bedrooms.
Okay, so this would be an addition, it would be three.
And then, no, and then the third floor has a bed, one and a half bedroom. So I don't know if you can see it on the pictures, yeah.
Is there a reason why you want to expand? Like why you want to?
I just, I just want to make something out of that basically because it's, it's an apartment. So I want to try to build the stairs and add more living area and try to make a, another apartment that someone can, you know, rent. We in need of apartments nowadays. Right now, my, I'm just, it's just me living there because I had to tell the tenant from the second floor that she have to move because I didn't know the whole process. But I guess they have to do something with the flat roof support. And she cannot be there. So now my whole house, well, actually only me living there, so.
I do have some comments. You're in a wetland. You're in a hundred-year flood plain. So if you do work on the site, you're gonna have to go to the conservation commission before you can get approval to go forward.
I'm on a wet, oh.
Um, you have, your floor plans show two small rooms approximately nine feet by ten feet. That, you don't label them as bedrooms, but they could potentially be used as bedrooms.
On the third floor?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Well, that would change your parking requirements. Because if you, if you have three bedrooms in a unit, you have to have an extra, another space in order to accommodate it. So I would recommend that if you approve it, that you require that those rooms have no door. Um, so I would recommend that if you approve it, that you require that those rooms have no door.
Their rooms don't have no door?
Have, don't have a door, and so they can't be used as a bedroom. Your plans show two bedrooms in each unit plus another room, another small room that's nine by ten.
Oh, no.
The concern is that they be, that you, that whoever occupies them would be using them as another parking space, uh, as a, as a, another bedroom. And if that's the case, you would need additional parking space and more relief, more permits.
No doors on the, on the room, because that can't be a bedroom?
Oh, no, oh, oh, I call one at the office, because it's, it's a little small.
Yeah.
And then the other one is, is a little bit bigger.
Yeah.
So then, uh, um, we're talking on the third floor, so then, um, I was gonna do, uh, another master bedroom, but if, if it's, if we, I don't have to do it, then.
Yeah.
I, I'm, I'm here also to take advice, you know, if, 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 if it's, if it's not a three-family, then what can I do on my third floor, because it's basically an apartment?
All I'm saying, all I'm gonna say is I'm recommending to them that it not, that if you're not gonna use as a bedroom, that it, they put a restriction on it, so it can't be used as a bedroom.
So it doesn't require additional, so it doesn't require more parking?
Oh, to find more parking?
'Cause if there's a door on that room, you're gonna be required additional parking, that's what he's saying.
Oh, okay, 'cause I got five garages and another lot with three garages, I can park more cars there or take the doors out of the garage, that way that the cars can go in.
Top to the board.
Huh?
John, are you talking about the attic?
Yes.
Uh, but, and the plan says it's an open room and have a closet, that's the one you're talking about, or the office? Um, this is, and this, this plan says it's an open room in the attic.
Open room perhaps a closet? You're talking about this?
This one?
But this, but why this is open room instead of bedroom, because there's a closet, not into the closet?
Right. But in order to get access, you have to access all the other rooms to get to it, so it's less likely to use as a bedroom.
And it says, and it says, instead of bedroom, says open.
How many rooms, bedrooms are in the attic?
So it's, 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 it's one and the, a small one, which is, could be an office. And then it's the living room that I'm trying to convert into a, a, a bedroom, and then on top of the roof, which is flat, that I wanna do a, a master bedroom? And the living, um, living room, and it already has a bathroom and, and everything.
So in total, you want three bedrooms with one office?
Yeah. Yeah.
In the end, like once it's built?
On, on, yeah, exactly, like, like it's in the plan.
With one office.
Yeah.
You can't make that small room into a bedroom.
That small bedroom?
Yeah, the one that's small, the small room.
Oh, no, 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 'cause the chimney is there, the chimney is there, and it would be more work and stuff like that, so if I have to take that door out, I can, there's no problem, I take that door out from the office.
So you, you will need more parking space, is it?
If, if he puts a door on there, he'll need more parking spaces, that's what John said, so he can't put a door on that office.
Which, which one, the office?
Office, the office.
Oh, so I take that door out, yeah.
So, yeah, take the door off the office room, that's, that's used as an office, and that won't, uh, increase your, your parking requirements, that's what.
Wha- what about building the, uh, the, the master bedroom, is that gonna, uh, take, is that gonna be, uh?
From the limited information you gave me, 'cause this is all, this is the only site plan I have, so it really doesn't show parking, but from what I'm, what I can see there, it looks like you have enough parking for the number of bedrooms you propose.
Yeah.
But if you're gonna use the other one, you might not have it, I can't tell from this lot, from this, from this site plan.
Oh, okay, alright, so I take that door out of the, yeah.
Any other questions? Is there any, is there a, um, is the public hearing? Uh, council, council, would you like to, okay, there is no, uh, no comment from the public, uh, you will go to the planning board on?
On July twenty-third.
July twenty-third, be back here on July twenty-third at, at six.
July twenty-third?
Yes, and then August thirteenth, back here at six, remember those two dates and the time.
Okay.
Okay, so, 'cause you'll have to be back here.
Okay.
Okay?
And do I have to bring anything, no?
No. Uh, but if you have questions, you could always.
Okay.
You can always come see him, just for clarification and stuff like that.
Okay, I'm sorry, it's my first time, I don't.
No, 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 you're doing a good job.
You did well.
Yeah, you did good for, for a solo.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All set?
Yes.
John, bro, he need a new, a new parking plan, no, for next time?
Uh, yeah, I would like a, a plan to show where you're parking and how many spaces you have.
Okay, okay, for, for the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright.
Okay, make them. Motion to adjourn? Second, all those in favor?
Thank you.